Well, it is four o'clock. I see ladies and gentlemen and visitors. I don't see any visitors. I see all of them.
Put in out here is.
It is four o'clock. Time to get a meeting of several color check for order. Turn it over to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
I've got a question. I'd like to make a few new decorative comments. We're turning it over to Lisa. I'd like to highlight that staff met to brainstorm opportunities, strategies, and experiences related to this topic of minimum housing code enforcement and general housing issues. And I think we possibly can create opportunities and will provide assistance. And in doing so, we can learn from our peer communities, some of the programs that they've had that work. However, in doing so, I think at least on my part, I've recognized a number of our communities are promoting a number of different types of housing programs and housing assistance. But we found that most of them are dependent on, if there have any significance, that is that they're dependent on state or federal funding of either such as home funding or their entitlement communities where they receive state or federal funding year over year. If council is so inclined to have a program developed in Monroe, adequate resourcing is going to be viable. And that would be in the form of staffing and then funds for possible loans or grants if we were so inclined. That, to me, that suggests at least a few questions for you to ponder as a means of giving myself and staff guidance. Three come to mind. How broad or narrow should eligibility be for loans and/or grants to be designed? Second, how much taxpayer money should be allocated? Third, what objectives is the city setting for the program? Are we attempting to reduce flight, decrease housing demolitions, or increase in housing demolitions? Promoting neighborhood revitalization such as in Concord Avenue area, Winchester area, historicistic, or other neighborhoods? And then there are possibly other components. We'd like to understand what your interests are, which your goals are, which your objectives are in terms of kind of guidance you might be able to give to us on whether or not to develop a housing program and the scope of those elements. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Lisa, or turn it over to Lisa. She's got a presentation to help introduce the topic and give you some insights and some background on the topic.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Managers, City Attorney. I have prepared a brief presentation, PowerPoint presentation today in the status report that was in your packet. Does go over some example programs from other municipalities. Keep in mind, it's definitely not all inclusive, but it will provide us some discussion or a starting point for discussion. Today's presentation, I'll briefly discuss background history, research conducted on entitlement and non-entitlement communities, go over some example housing rehab programs, and provide some options for discussion. In two thousand, May 2014, City Council passed a resolution supporting proactive minimum housing standard enforcement. This resolution was a result of numerous concerns and complaints for residents regarding their property values, declining neighborhoods due to increasing number of unmaintained and abandoned dwellings within the city of Monroe. Since the resolution was passed, code enforcement has processed approximately forty-five minimum housing cases, with twelve out of those forty-five being demolitions, with a few of them coming into compliance prior to demolition. Due to the number of minimum housing cases that are deemed for demolition, City Council has become concerned with the impacts to neighborhoods and the city as a whole. Based on council members' request to hold a strategic planning meeting regarding minimum housing issues, staff held, as the manager mentioned, a brainstorm meeting amongst the management, attorney, and myself. During the meeting, staff discussed research in other jurisdictions regarding various housing programs that are being offered. Planning staff with the assistant city manager did conduct some research on both entitlement and non-entitlement communities that provide various housing programs. An entitlement community receives direct funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on an annual basis, whereas non-entitlement communities are required to apply and compete for grant funding. Some of the entitlement communities that staff reviewed included the city of Wilmington, Asheville, Charlotte, Greensboro, and Greenville. Some non-entitlement communities that staff researched included, what we wanted to do was look at municipalities with a population between twenty-four thousand and thirty-five thousand to be of the same consistent size of population as Monroe. Of those municipalities, only the city of Sanford, Ashburn, and town of Mooresville contain some form of housing programs. I think there was probably about sixteen municipalities with the same size or in that range of population that I looked at. Once again, entitlement communities receive direct funding from HUD to perform their housing programs. All the entitlement communities contain a large population base and have entire departments, divisions to operate their housing programs.
Lisa.
Yes, ma'am.
One question, please. Can you explain the difference entitlement versus non-entitlement? How that, how you get that? I'm not aware on that.
It's, okay. Let me try to remember the criteria. Entitlement communities are those communities of a certain size of population. I think for municipalities, it has to be fifty-five thousand, fifty thousand and greater. And I believe for counties, it has to be two hundred thousand and greater. Once they reach that population size, they can apply to become entitlement. I think it's a year-long application process where you have to develop a long-range plan of what your vision, what your programs are going to be, and then a plan to implement, an action plan to actually implement before you can become entitlement. Once you're an entitlement community, you receive direct funding from HUD on an annual basis. And then non-entitlement, of course, you don't receive direct funding. Those smaller municipalities such as Monroe, you have to apply and compete for that funding.
So it's by population?
I'm not recalling the other criteria exactly.
You've got to ballpark on that funding that does entitlement pro, uh, communities receive.
I think it's based on a formula. And that's based on the size of population. I don't know the exact formula of what they base the type of amount of funding.
So the county is, wait, the county or not?
Union County is, uh, they're eligible to apply for entitlement. At the July twenty-first meeting, we did present the request to partner or agree with their entitlement application. So we did sign that agreement, or that was adopted by council. So they are moving forward with their application. I spoke with the Mr. Martins today regarding their application process. And they've already been starting to work with HUD regarding that process and getting their long-range plans and their implementation action plans developed. They are waiting to receive their letter to move forward to begin that process.
Thanks, just one clarification. Thank you. Excuse me, one second.
As I mentioned before, some of the communities that we've looked at, entitlement communities, were Wilmington and Charlotte. We looked at several other ones. But I chose to kind of focus on these programs because simply I felt that they may be permissible or permitted for Monroe. One of the programs was the homeowner rehabilitation loan program from Wilmington. Basically, that's offered to low-income homeowners who have owned and occupied their home for a minimum of twelve months. It is a loan proceeds are used to make needed repairs to your home. That might be including wiring, plumbing, heating, and air systems. Maximum loan amount is seventy-five thousand and then eighty-five thousand for reconstruction. Wilmington also has a minor housing repair loan program that is mirrored exactly after the homeowner rehabilitation loan program. That maximum loan amount is twenty-five thousand. Payments are based solely on the ability to pay low-interest rates from zero to two percent. And it is a twenty-year repayment term. So those were two of the couple of programs from the city of Wilmington. Keep in mind, they are entitlement. They do receive direct funding from HUD. And then another program the city of Charlotte operates is called the Safe Home Housing Rehabilitation Program. Provides grants to low-income homeowners, seeks to correct code violations that are in need of repair or replaced within two to five, two to three years in general property improvement. This maximum amount is forty-two thousand. And if a dwelling, the repairs to improve that home is greater than forty-two thousand to bring it to the code, then they're not, they wouldn't be eligible.
You say grants, you're really meaning loans, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
This one's, this one is a grant program. The previous two were loan programs, and this one's a grant program.
So the amount, we have grant amount forty-two thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Based on the amount of subsidy or request of funding, a D restrictor may be placed on the property for zero to fifteen years to ensure compliance with the program requirements. Of course, if the property changes hands during that restriction period, the city will require repayment of those funds. And as mentioned before, the non-entitlement communities staff researched included the city of Sanford, Ashburn, and the town of Mooresville. Each of these municipalities, they do contain a staff person that their sole job responsibility is community development. City of Sanford Planning Department is a consolidated multi-jurisdictional agency serving Sanford, the town of Broadway, and Lee County. They've actually adopted an entire community development plan in two thousand and eight that provides a purpose to inventory, assess current community needs, in order to target specific areas of need for special assistance. They also have an urgent repair rehabilitation project that they, I think they offer every year. Basically, the income-eligible homeowners can receive up to five thousand to allocate to urgent repair to their homes, such as roof replacement would be an example of that. They have to be sixty-five, sixty-two, or older, legally disabled and in need of emergency home repair. City of Ashburn, they applied and received a urgent repair program grant in two thousand and five from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. This program funds, provides funds to assist low-income households with special needs in addressing housing conditions which pose imminent threats to their life and/or safety or to provide accessibility modifications. I think they have a minimum of seven households that they're going to renovate under the grant that they received. Town of Mooresville is a little bit different. They have developed a consortium in nineteen ninety-six with Cabarrus, Iredell, and Rowan County for the purpose is of cooperatively providing safety and affordable housing to low-income citizens living in non-municipalities. The non-municipalities include Concord, Cabarrus County, Iredell County, Canopus, Mooresville, Salisbury, Statesboro, and Rowan County. And the city of Concord actually acts as the lead entity of the consortium and is authorized to request, submit, and receive home funds from the Housing of Urban Development on their behalf. So basically, in other words, the consortium has developed an entitlement-type situation. And then the Concord serves as the lead and receives that funding directly from HUD and then distributes the funds to the consortium members and manages that program. Town of Mooresville is currently working with a hundred thousand for their critical home repair program. And I also spoke to the gentleman there that's the community development manager. They're working on a partnership with Habitat for Managing to develop a rehabilitation program that would utilize about two hundred thousand dollars.
Is that similar to what we are hoping to partner with the county of before?
Yes. That is the ultimate goal, of course, from the city of Monroe. If the county becomes entitlement, we would then be able to receive funding to put toward housing rehabilitation. The city of Monroe actually used to operate a housing rehabilitation loan program. And this has been many, many years ago, before my time. And I noticed I found in two thousand and seven, the planning department had prepared a draft housing purchase and rehabilitation loan program to reinvent the program, but it never moved forward to council for discussion. Just wanted to highlight a few of those criteria requirements. Loans are provided to low-income senior citizens who own and occupy their dwellings. Their loans are to rehabilitate, purchase, or rebuild homes that are dilapidated. The loan amounts would be in thirty thousand for property and then a hundred and twenty thousand to purchase or recon, or for reconstruction. Properties must be current on all add, floor, or on taxes, assessments, or other liens. This would be a loan program offering the form of a zero percent interest center given at a rate of twenty percent per year. And that twenty percent would begin after the five-year period for rehabilitation and ten years for purchase or reconstruction. If the property is sold or ownership is transferred, of course, that lien or loan would be repayable and due to the city of Monroe. The purchase rehabilitation housing loan program is one program that City Council may consider to reduce the number of minimum housing cases that are deemed dilapidated if budget is permitted. Over the years, staff has brought before City Council anywhere from one to nine cases for demolition per year. Each year, the number of demolition cases they vary due to budget, voluntary demolitions, fire department trainings, and Habitat for Humanities interest in properties. On average, a house costs approximately ten thousand dollars for demolition. But this also varies in size and whether asbestos is located within the home. I think in two thousand and fourteen, we did have one home that cost twenty-nine thousand to demolish it. Two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, staff had seven dwellings that were demolished that on average cost ten thousand per dwelling, I mean, per dwelling. And once again, our budget for the two thousand and sixteen fiscal year is approximately a hundred thousand for demolition cases. Now, I just want to provide a few options for, just to begin discussion. Once again, code enforcement budget is about a hundred thousand. This budget could be split to provide fifty thousand for demolitions or if chose by the council, could provide fifty thousand for a housing rehabilitation program. Keep in mind, if we do develop a rehabilitation program, additional staffing resources would need to be discussed at some point in time. Another option could be that the budget, an additional hundred thousand for housing rehabilitation program that matches the hundred thousand for demolitions. Or we could wait to see if Union County is approved, their entitlement application is approved by HUD to determine what that will do for the city of Monroe in a housing rehab program in the future.
Late line on that is, did time out?
Uh, a year.
That says they've applied.
Mm-hmm. They're waiting to see, receive their letter to move forward to apply right now. They've already started their plans, long-range plans, and their implementation plan with the assistance of HUD, but they haven't actually applied yet.
Yeah.
Right.
But one year hasn't, hasn't kicked in yet?
No, no.
That's a good.
Well, yeah, it has kicked in because they've already started.
It's started.
They've already started. So these, these were just some example programs that the staff kind of discovered through research conducted to just to begin discussion today. I will point out that all of these programs, they're geared toward homeowners who have owned and occupied the home. Most of them are geared toward low-income, a lot of them are geared toward the elderly or disabled. Staff seeking guidance and direction, if any, based on council's request to discuss these items today. And be happy to answer any questions or.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What determines, assume we did something like this, what is the break point from tearing a house down? In other words, how far your house have to be gone before you do that?
A house is deemed dilapidated if it costs fifty percent greater than the tax value to bring it back to code or the minimum standards.
I have a question. Use the term reconstruction.
I guess that would be technically the same thing as.
Rehab.
Rehab.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the reason I wanted to make sure because you didn't say reconstruction, you said reconstruction. So would that apply to the value, the fifty percent, the less on the reconstruction?
As far as?
Redoing a house.
For the.
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't set the criteria.
Okay.
So if we choose to move forward with the program, then that's when we would need to sit down and talk about what are going to be the eligible requirements and so forth.
And we tell that whole owner-occupied, right?
It's, it's up to the discretion of what council wants to discuss, what's your priorities? Are there any other options? All of the research that I've found is the programs are geared toward owner-occupied. So that's not, these type of programs will certainly have a purpose and there is a need, but it's not going to solve the problem of these homes that are becoming deteriorated and dilapidated that are vacant and unoccupied. There, we would have to brainstorm of what are other options out there that's.
Mr. Happy, if any, and I may ask the chief the same thing. If any, any other discussion between staff or anything, or councilman, brought up a couple of big vacuaries rehab where we might can work with the homeowners, where we don't tear it down and we can buy or get them to donate or make something where somebody can, if it is torn down, or somebody else could take the lot and put a house on it. Has anyone, would it be discussed on what Ms. Duncan had brought up earlier?
Not any additional discussions. I know when the code enforcement staffs begin a case, that's their very first ultimate goal is.
Yeah, I know we try to save it and we do everything all the way down.
Right.
And that's good, and I know we do that. But she was talking about, and Duncan talked about, if we get to the point to tear it down, some way that we can go in there and either work with the homeowner or if it's, if a lot of homeowners wants to go down, go ahead and tear it down, you know? And the fact of the case, can we, can we negotiate to try to buy the rest of that lot? If it's, if it's affordable or whatever, and take that lot and let some person in this category build a house on it? And that way, you put a house back on the empty lot, but let it be owner-occupied. Now, of course, she went much deeper into what I'm saying, but y'all know, y'all know the gist of it, you know what I'm saying. And I don't know if it's been discussed on that or not. But if we can put a house back on there for some of these folks who's in this dilemma here, I'd like to see something to help them get a home back on that.
That's right. And the reason is, is because otherwise, we end up with a vacant lot that we'll never be able to do anything with until that person who owns that lot does something. So we can be in perpetuity with a vacant lot. So that was why we were talking about other alternatives. Did you check with any other cities to find out what they do?
What we've talked about is that in that particular circumstance, if it's been torn down, the demo costs are lean on the property and have the same priorities on pay taxes. So we could then foreclose on it and then have the property and make that decision. But that's in a policy decision for council. Do you want us in the realm of owning vacant lots? That we can then create programs or utilize similar programs to then encourage folks to purchase that property from us and then build a, build a house with the, and so that's, that's something that we have discussed. But it comes down to, when you tear down the house, the city still doesn't own it. You'd have to foreclose on the property. And that's an issue of, do you want, is that a policy decision for council? That you want the city to own vacant lots that could be used for this or for what? Then it's how do you get to, this person will then build this house? Is it, are, are you saying that what you want us to also consider is then a program that would help create a formidable house? And we already do that with the, the, the Monroe Union CDC, yes. And, and also with Habitat in terms of working with them on certain issues. But would you want to do another program similar to that? Because you don't have any control over it until you foreclose on the lot.
But the alternative is to just keep a lien on the house. So you're either going to put a lien on the house where it's going to be there forever or we do something where we can actually do something with the property and maybe help the neighborhood revitalization or something like that. We've got to do something. We can't afford not to do something and just leave these lots vacant. We need to be proactive and try to, try to save some houses. If we can't save the houses, then put something on that, on that lot instead of just having a vacant lot.
And in that particular case, and the issue is, you can either have a lien or you can own the property. And not, if what you're saying is that you want this count, that if the council wants staff to work on a process where we own the vacant lots and can move forward, we can without a lien negotiate with the property owner. But if then comes as the appropriate thing for the city to have an inventory of vacant lots that could be used for that. That is, if you want us to move along that path, we can also provide that to you. Because we, I think what we've outlined is what is to help solve the problem and prevent even getting to the point of demolition. But if you're at that, past that point of demolition, it's a different room entirely, but we can move forward.
Well, I think we're going to have to do something. Because by the time they've got, it comes to council to demolish, it's already, they had warnings, they had hearings, and nothing's been addressed. And I'm, I mean, it's, it's a long process. It's not something that happened a month ago and we're demolishing a house today. It's a long process that they've gone through, you know, trying to get the homeowner to repair. And then when it finally gets to the demolish stage, it's pretty bad.
And, and many of the homeowners that they meet with or don't meet with, the homeowner don't even show up for their meetings. And here we are, we got, if y'all been, probably a year-long process, or sometimes it's a run.
Longer than that.
And longer than that. And you, the staff has worked a year on one house. And when it gets to us, what do y'all want to do, tear it down? You know, it's, it's, it's already pretty much a term of what we're going to do because y'all done all you can do with it. But if we can save that with whoever owns it, I'm not saying push those folks out. If we can help them get the house back on there through something like this or get a front-of-the-world person that qualifies on it and get a house on that lot, then that's a whole lot better than just a lot sitting there with the city owning the lien. Because who knows when you ever get your money back out of that lot? Because the owner who had, had put it there, he's at this repair, and the lot is empty. He don't have any money to buy it back and put it on it anyhow, he or she, or they have never, have never in the past. So you keep putting gap here, gap here, and gap here. We need to put a house back on these lots and help some of these folks.
Mayor.
Yeah.
To me, it's, it's bad business if we go in and we tear the house down and we don't try to secure the lot and just let it sit there. I think we need to purchase, well, basically not purchase a lot, if we have to tear the house down, that would be our lot.
Well, you'd have to take the difference.
We have to equal on the.
Yeah.
It's what we're checking to talk about.
You have to do something kind of in this situation.
Well, I'm making a motion that we foreclose and take the lot. And we can work from Habitat to actually selling the lot ourselves to an individual that can afford to put a house back on there. And that way, the lot's don't just sit there forever, but at least we're putting something back in. And also, that would become a tax item, so, you know, we would be able to get property tax on it.
So maybe from a resourcing standpoint, going down this path, we, we should, as staff or management, we should be looking at possibly allocating, requesting the board to allocate sufficient resources that match what we're putting towards demolition to buy, buy lots that may become vacant.
Well, we've got a hundred thousand dollars. Is that what you think you have in that budget?
We don't have, well, yeah, we have a hundred thousand in the budget for demolitions.
But out of the ten thousand that we would demolition, let's say that lot was worth eighteen thousand. Then that ten thousand is, we're not going to have to pay because we tore the house down, only the A's, how about the G's?
Well, it depends on what the cost of demo, if we paid ten, it's, we have the lien and then we go through the foreclosure process, let people bid on it, and hopefully somebody else doesn't buy it out. Now, and then you end up in the position of if you have property owner or the bank that may have the mortgage buy it out, then we have no control of it. If you're saying that what we do is we approach them with an offer of, we'll just take this off your hands and extinguish the lien, but we have to get the property, that's one other thing. I think the manager is correct. It's let us know what the resource perspective would be. And perhaps it would be appropriate to outline that before saying that from a policy standpoint that we should start foreclosing on these lots. Because then, if you foreclose on them and own them, then you're telling us that we're going to have a land bank. And so the question.
Yeah, would you say that you could check with other cities reference to this, or you have not checked with other cities?
I've only researched the, these, what type of programs were offered. Which it sounds, it seems is just the housing rehabilitation programs that are offered. Now, some of the larger entitlement communities, they had some other programs, but I didn't look at some of them because they, they were entitlement communities receiving direct funding.
Right. Well, some of these other cities certainly just don't tear the houses down and leave the lot vacant, I would think. That's why I was asking to check to see what they do.
Actually, ma'am, they do. Actually, they, they do. They do tear it down. They do tear it down, get a lien on the property. I mean, many, in our experience, many do. It's, it's, it's when you have programs like this that allow you to get at the front end.
Before it gets to that.
That's before it gets to that problem.
That's what we need to look at.
That's what, it's against a policy decision for council.
Well, now, have a house that needs thirty thousand dollars worth of repair. Now, this, this will be a hundred percent what I've said, but a lot, lots will. Now, that, this, this won't be a hundred percent what I said, but a lot, lots will. They have thirty thousand dollars repair and they fix fifteen thousand dollars up. But when they get through, the house is still worth forty thousand. They still ain't worth the twenty-nine thousand. This year, a, a lot of times, they don't get enough money on what you do. They're talking about their five thousand dollars to do a roof. You can't put a roof on a house for five thousand dollars.
Billy, you used to serve on the housing thing, and you were familiar with the loan programs or the grant programs the city did, because I know you served on that. It was before my time. Do you know anything about what they're doing at other places?
Um, Lisa's pretty much outlined what's going on.
So I know the city had, had, had grants that they, or loans that they gave to people because there were still people paying it back at one time when I first came up council.
We forgave that one.
One that, I've talked with investors about, um, their willingness to work with us if we decide to, to move in this direction. One of the things we want to have to do is stop looking at tax factor to determine whether or not a house needs to be torn down or whether at least fifty percent of, uh, to be, um, deteriorated or, you know, whatever dilapidated, whatever the case might be. You know, we tore down a house last year. Now, four years before then, the homeowner had put in a brand new eating and acquisition system and the house was being rented. Uh, the tax value on it at that time was twenty-nine thousand dollars. When we, uh, were looking to determine whether or not it needed to be torn down, we looked at the tax value, the tax value was zero. A house doesn't go from twenty-nine thousand dollars tax value to zero, uh, during one valuation period when it was rented for, you know, three or four years previously. We need to come up with a program that's flexible, need to come up with a program where we are trying to save houses if that's what we want to do. You know, there are, um, software programs out there that will help, um, someone go through and make a determination what a house is actually worth. Uh, and a lot of times it's not going to be what the tax factor says. And then we will be able to make a determination if this is a house we can sell or, I mean, save or is this, or is this a house that we need to, to demolish and fix up? Uh, you know, just like, um, Ben Will, Ben Winfield's house over on, uh, East Avenue. Uh, we made a determination based on, uh, a grant criteria that we got from North Carolina House Finance Agency, that it was too bad of a house to actually start fixing. You know, the money, as the mayor said, the money you were going to put into it would not have been worth, you were putting that kind of money into it. So we tore the house down and the city built them a new house there. Same thing over on, uh, Fairleigh Avenue, there was a house over there, we did the same, did the same thing with, there's one over on Military. But again, there are houses that the Monroe Union County CDC has, uh, rehabbed and sold to homeowners, uh, when they, or dialed the agreement that they had with, uh, Pershing. And Pershing had a lot of, you know, for those properties out there. But again, there, there were others that they tore down and built a new house on that lot. And again, they, they were able to determine which houses could be saved and remodeled and which ones needed to be torn down, which ones were too far gone. So it's just, uh, some matter of being fluid in our approach to addressing, uh, whatever policy we're trying to reach and, and, and not thinking about tax factor. Tax factor does not get us there. Uh, we have to be willing to, to research ourselves and determine what the value of the property actually is. Uh, there is a house over on Fairleigh Avenue, uh, that, uh, the homeowner was encouraged to, to just tear it down. And now there is a property there that is a rental unit because the, the, um, the homeowner was able to sell the house to an investor. And that investor was willing to put the money into it to turn it into a viable rental unit. So we just have to be fluid in our approach and, and be reasonable. And there are people out there that are willing to work with us.
But if, if, if this is a good program, we, we've done something like this in the past that, uh, we've alluded to. And it's helped many a person get their house taken. But I know some houses that was out there that needed repairs and they only got enough money to do the roof, and the roof is fine and the rest of the house is as bad as it ever was. So we, I don't see where we've helped anybody when we do something like that. If we can't put the house back up to where it should be, then I, I'm not so sure that the, the homeowner's money is really spinning the wheel and wasting it. And Mr. McGee talking about a land bank, and I understand what you're telling me. But we should not have a land bank. Uh, if, if we had ever, if we have never a lot and the house we tore down so far, it, it, we need to move these lots as fast as we can. And I know that's not in thirty minutes, and I understand that. But we, we don't need to sit on the lot for a year to try to get somebody to build a house. So therefore, we should not have a land bank unless you tear it down a hundred hours a week. So no more houses that we tear down, we should not have a land bank. We should get these lots on the market to somebody. Yes, somebody will take them. There's going to be argument on that. But ain't nobody going to get, they will, uh, if nothing else. If, if nothing else, give it to a poor person that can build a house on it. But I don't think it should go to anybody to build a house on for real property. That'll be homeowners. Now, that's, that's what I'm saying.
I agree with that, I agree with that.
That's exactly where it will be. And, and if we got, if, if we wind up with a land bank with lots, then we're not doing our job. We're not putting those lots on the market in the right manner. I'm not a magician, but I, I guarantee you, I, any one of us could get them lots on the market.
At least you have a good idea how many vacant lots we have as a result of demolition.
I don't know off the top of my head. I can try to pull that information together.
This year, have we? Because I think it was what, three last year, maybe?
We haven't tore down that many houses. It sounds like we have, but we haven't tore down any houses.
It, it does sound like we have, but really we, it, it's been building. And our list has grown over the years just due to reduction in budget, staff. So it does seem like we've been doing quite a few. But really, if we had been doing so many per year, what now?
Some of the people that I think is in the paper, but somewhere I've read or something, it's what's been said, it sounds like we just tearing houses down for themselves. We have not tore down that many houses. But one house is, one house is too much. If we can take that lot and put a nice home on it for some portion of the living.
So I think what we're, what we're saying, if I'm hearing correctly, is that we want to do some sort of rehabilitation program and to be developed. So you need to tell us what it is that you need.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I'm sure that's the one you're dropping the budget. Maybe every year, every year.
The manager, the money and the staff.
You've got a hundred thousand dollars in there now. You're going to spend ten thousand dollars to tear down the house. Don't tear down the house, spend the ten thousand dollars to get the lot.
How you going to get the lot unless you tear the house down as well?
All right, here we go. Tap it.
No, really.
Art, you've got the house that's going to be demolished.
Yeah.
Okay, you do your negotiations to get the lot. Art, if you don't, if we didn't do that to get the lot, it's going to cost us ten thousand dollars or more to tear it down, right?
Yeah.
We don't tear it down, we ain't spending ten thousand dollars.
Nobody...
And then you got to rehab it.
Uh-huh.
Then you got to rehab the house. Because you can't get the lot unless you tear the house down.
That's, that's what I'm getting to.
Okay. Well, let's just all get to...
We don't need a hundred thousand dollars. We don't need a hundred thousand. I think, and, and, uh, well, if a hundred thousand dollars every time somebody wants to go across the street, uh, we can spend a hundred thousand dollars in five minutes. But I think where I'm at, I, I thank the staff for researching. Come back with something to, to, to the council and lay the program out. If we like it, we'll take it. If we want to fine tune it, we'll fine tune it and we'll go someplace.
I would agree to that.
Mark, we do that.
We said you're talking about...
That's a good idea.
We thought everything, we don't want, we want.
But I do think we do miss if we don't consider foreclosure. Because as Lynn, as Bobby, and a number of people have said, these liens are of no value. The lot remains empty, nobody is buying them because they have so many liens against them via tax and for demolition. We have got to consider and probably use foreclosure. The word land bank, uh, to me, may not be the proper terminology. We don't, as a council, I wouldn't think it would be good sense for us to bank the land.
That's what I was saying.
Uh, what we want to do is take the land and flip it as soon as possible. I would even be in favor of, of flipping it and losing money on it if in fact it could be sold to someone to build a house on.
A homeowner, it's all real.
A homeowner, yeah.
It could be a lot.
And so there's all, to me, that there are two, there are two different issues here. One is, uh, a program like this where I can't imagine that a hundred thousand dollars is going to do too much towards saving too many houses here in Monroe County or in Monroe because, you know, as Bobby said, a hundred thousand just doesn't go too far. It's not a bad program, it's not starting point. You know, I would say maybe we probably ought to be looking at something larger. But then again, as far as regards to empty lots, that is another issue. The empty lot prob, problem is an issue. And rehabbing a, a house to save it from getting to demolition is another issue. And, and so we have to look at them like that, in my opinion.
Well, if we keep talking about money, a hundred thousand dollars, is it four houses? Was that what was up there we've kept torn down this year? What, what was it selling them?
Yeah, I think it was like seven.
Well, you would have a hundred thousand dollars if you had every one of those lots. So if, if we had every one of those lots, we got seven lots or whatever it is, and the land bank. We don't need a land bank, we need that lot going. We tear a house down today, we need to start processing some way or another and move this lot into somebody's hands.
Well, you got to foreclose to get the lot.
That takes some process.
Yeah, I think, well, I know that, I'm just, I'm, yeah, I know we got to foreclose to get the lot. We got to buy it, we got to pay for it.
You mean as soon as possible is what we should do?
Yeah, we don't need a land bank. We'll have a land bank if we tear down a house and don't do nothing with the lot. Tear down a house, don't do nothing with the lot, in a year, yeah, well, we got, we got a land bank.
Why don't you just have staff come back and give us what they can come up with as far as how to do this, how to do this rehabilitation program, and also address the vacant lots and give us some options to look at?
Exactly what I, and also, uh, Larry, be practical in, in the amount of money we need to do it. You ain't going to do it on another type of launch. But if we're gonna, if we're gonna venture into this, we need to try to do it, Larry.
So do you need a motion on that?
Let me say this. We got a hundred thousand already in that program. Won't we just wait, let them come back with something, let the council look at it? If we like it, fine, if we don't, let's fine tune it and see where we at and see how far we can go with what we got. Instead of let's, let's throw down a hundred thousand dollars to get the lot.
Okay, I wonder, we refuse now, that hundred thousand, Bobby, that we have in the budget and the current half is just budgeted for tearing down houses?
I can't talk about it. But if we, if you've got a house today to tear down, we're going to try to buy that house or tear it down, out of this hundred thousand. We don't need to go to another pot, we got a pot right there.
Well, I'm, I'm going to make a motion, I don't even know what much time, I'm going to make a motion that we let staff research...
Rehabilitation program and the vacant lot. Right, Lynn?
Yes.
Right, and I'm going to second that.
Bring it back.
And let's come back and we'll talk about it then.
Has the council agreed on all that?
Well, we have a motion in a second.
I, I agree, but I have a question.
You say that's a motion, okay, go ahead.
Okay, the question is, we're still also waiting to see if application is going to be approved with the county. Would, you know, would help us too if we say get some time, if you're done in mind and you, you'll come up with...
But I think if I'm not, uh, this is my dementia kicking in again. I believe that I am right in remembering that when the person from the county came to the council and discussed us joining this, this thing, that they mentioned a number of around two hundred and fifty thousand. Was that not the number that I...
As far as...
What they thought they might get in this entitlement program?
Let me see if I have, I think I have that.
I thought it sounded...
They were projected to get, if they do, or become entitlement, one million, one hundred and eighty thousand.
Oh, maybe it was Monroe's part of it.
That was Monroe's part.
That Monroe's part of it was going to be about two hundred and fifty thousand, which obviously that would be a number even that we wouldn't have to budget out of our funds, so...
They probably could use it and put something in it. Well, that's something that we can look at, and that's something that they can put in an option when they come back and bring us back options. That's certainly one of the options that we can, that we can, uh, talk about.
We're already into this budget year. And, and so what we're talking about here is not something that's going to be, uh, developed in thirty days. You know, we're, we're probably looking back toward the next year's budget. You know, I think by that time we may have something back from the county on this entitlement program.
Well, so on the hundred thousand dollar, how much is left in that budget now? Is it still at a hundred or is this house is torn down from out of there?
There might have been three houses that have been taken out of that. I don't know the specific.
So the full seven was not taken out of this?
No.
Okay.
But we still...
But we do have cases on the books.
Let the staff go back and come up with a game plan and go from there. I think Lisa and Larry did a, did a good job.
His team, I believe Lisa did a lot of the good stuff.
Let me tell you something, many years ago, one of the first, uh, what do you call it? The, uh, convention, uh, that we have out in Texas and Oklahoma and everywhere else, what's that?
National League.
Yeah, National League. Fred Long and I were sitting in, uh, in one of the seminars and they were talking about the school parking. And everybody was real, real excited about it. And I looked over at Fred and I was sort of a new member, and I said, Fred, ain't that what you've been doing for twenty years in city? Yep. So, I mean, you know, you can, you can think out of the box a little bit and come up with your new program even better than, uh, what a lot of other cities...
Well, we, we can come up with a program to put a house back on empty lot. We have, will have the game, uh, you know, that's what we need to... Do you make that into a motion, Hunter?
That's a motion, we got a motion in a second already, and I think we incorporated all that in there.
If you got that, I'm all right. I have a motion, if I get any other discussion.
Yeah, one thing. Some of these properties, and in particular, there was a property over on, uh, the corner of Jerome Street and, um, Ford Street, that is, the, uh, the emblem city attorney and our assistant city attorney has started working on trying to get, uh, possession on it. Uh, and one of the issues that come up with some of these properties is that it's a property and you have many, many heirs. And that is not, uh, a fifteen minute fix. Uh, when you start trying to chase down the heirs and get signatures and, and notify people that, you know, that foreclosure is impending, it could take a, take a long time to satisfy. So I just want to make sure that we understand what we're getting ready to go with.
Well, don't we already know all that if we fix or tear the house down?
No, no, so...
No, we don't tell them we're going to tear it down?
You got a lien on, you just got a lien on it.
Well, we, we do a title search when we're doing the enforcement so we can notify someone. So we typically then find out it's going to be pretty convoluted. And one of the problems we end up having is a lot of times when we do the notification, as Councilmember Jordan pointed out, you don't hear from the folks that do the note that, um, have an interest or have an issue and, you know, they may not find out. We may not have anything to show that they're aware of the process when we're ready to continue moving forward.
And another, uh, issue that comes up too is typically the staff contacts that person who is the, uh, is the person, uh, on the tax records as the contact person. And that's usually who they're communicating with.
Who, Lynn, may that be the owner?
Okay, how about, uh, any other questions, comments? Here are none, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Anything else, Ms. Lisa? Would you like to speak for a minute?
I'm good.
Okay.
She's young.
Ms. Larry? Anything else?
No, thank you, thank you for the feedback.
All right, council, have anything else? If not, let's have a motion adjourned for a second, all in favor, with Jordan.